All right, it's a little bit after. It's 6:16, so we'll start with our annual first report. I'll let you have the floor.
Thank you. So I'm here tonight to present the 2025 Annual Management Financial Report. This is based on the 2324 school year. So the school's first report was started in 2003, based on fiscal year 2002, with regular updates and the commissioner's rules since then. It expands the accountability for school districts to financial services. The primary goal is quality performance in school district finances, which is quite significant due to the complexity associated with the school finance system. The system is designed to encourage Texas public schools to manage their financial resources to provide maximum allocation for direct instructional purposes. The school's first accountability rating system assigns one of four accountability ratings to Texas school districts. There are now 21 questions with a maximum score of 100 points available, and of these, the first four questions are critical indicators. Failure to meet any of the four critical indicators is a signal of fiscal distress and causes an automatic failure of the first report. Huffman ISD earned a total score of 90 points for the 2025 school's first rating that we will be discussing tonight. The rate, again, is based on the 2324 PIMS data and the fiscal year 2024 annual financial report, which was approved in November 2024. Indicator one ensures that the district files the audited annual financial report to TEA within 30 days of the deadline. One thing to keep in mind is this upcoming year for the next first report, this indicator is temporarily going to change. So our 2025 audit will be brought to you at the November board meeting. Typically, it would need to be filed within 30 days. However, TEA has notified the districts that they are putting a new Audit 2.0, as they call it. It's in the process, so no 2025 audits will be due to them until February 27, 2026. So you will see a much later date in the next one, but they're giving everyone kind of a bye on that one, so. But we passed that one. The second one is a modified version or a modified version of the auditor's opinion means that you need to correct some of your reporting or internal controls. Therefore, a school district's goal is to receive an unmodified opinion on its annual financial report, and we did receive that for the 2024 year. Indicator three seeks to make certain that the district has timely paid all bills and obligations, including financial arrangements to pay for school construction, school buses, photocopiers, et cetera. We passed this, and there was no default indebtedness. Indicator four seeks to make sure that the district fulfilled its obligations to TRS, the Texas Workforce Commission, and the Internal Revenue Service to transfer payroll withholdings and to fulfill any additional payroll-related obligations required by the district. We passed this indicator as well. Indicator five, this is only the second year it's been scored since 2018. Many districts fell below $0 because of a prior period of adjustment to GASB 75 for other pension and employee benefits. We passed this indicator with a positive net position here, which demonstrates financial solvency, and we had a calculated net position of $27 million. Indicator six asks if the average change in fund balance over three years has decreased less than 25%. They're wanting to know if fund balance is decreasing too quickly. If so, the maximum the state will award for the first report is 89. We passed this ceiling as well, with a 14.9% decrease between those three years. Indicator seven asks if the number of days of cash and current investments on hand is sufficient to cover operating expenditures. This indicator measures how long in days after the end of the fiscal year that the school district could have dispersed funds for its operating expenditures without receiving any new revenues. A positive score in earning points is anything over 30 days, but 90 days is required to score the maximum points available. As of June 30, 2024, we had 65.781 days of cash and cash equivalents, which earned us six points. Indicator eight measures whether the school district had sufficient short-term assets at the end of the fiscal year to pay off its short-term liabilities. To earn the maximum number of points for this question, we must have a ratio of at least 3.0, and we did have that at 4.2775. Indicator nine asks, "Did you spend more than you earned?" The school district automatically passes this indicator if the district had at least 60 days of cash on hand. Although our expenditures exceeded our revenues in 2024 by 7.35%, the number of days of cash on hand was over 65 days. Therefore, we earned the full 10 points for this question. Indicator 10 continues to not be rated. They stopped looking at this one with COVID. Indicator 11, the question for indicator 11 is like asking someone if their mortgage exceeds the market value of their home. It looks at all of our government-wide statements, which consolidates the financial information across the district. Our ratio increased slightly in fiscal year 2024 to .7229 due to the initial bond sale. For those that may not pass the first test, this indicator recognizes that high-growth districts incur additional operating costs to open new instructional campuses. Our district received six points based on the first portion of the indicator as our change in students was not 7% or more between 2020 and 2024. Indicator 12 asks about the school district's ability to make debt service principal and interest payments. Huffman ISD's long-term liabilities compared to the assessed values resulted in a ratio of 5.2936, which earned the district eight points for the indicator. Like this last indicator, the ratio increased slightly due to the initial bond sale. Indicator 13 measures the percentage of the budget that the school district spends on administration. Huffman ISD's administrative cost ratio is .1063, or 10.63%. This is below the 11.51% for school districts with an ADA between 1,000 and 4,999. Therefore, we earned the maximum points available. This indicator has been in place since the school's first report began. However, beginning with the fiscal year 2025, the calculation and ratios will change slightly. Currently, for fiscal year 2024, it compares administrative cost straight to the instructional cost. Beginning this next year, it will look at administrative cost as a percentage of all cost of the district. Because it's looking at a bigger amount, the ratio is going to decrease, so we will want ours to be below 5.85%. And I believe that is the number in our ballot and scorecard this year because we knew that this was going to happen. Indicator 14 checks to see if we had more than a 15% decline in the student-to-staff ratio over a three-year period. It looks at the three-year period due to the lag that may occur as students increase or decrease. The school district automatically passes this indicator if there were no decline in students. Therefore, Huffman ISD passed both questions. Indicator 15 measures how well the district was able to project average daily attendance for the coming biennium. It is the first year it has been scored since fiscal year 2020 due to the effect that COVID had on projections. Indicator 16 measures the quality of data reported in the Public Education Information Management System, also known as PIMS, and the annual financial report to ensure that the data in each place matches up. PIMS is a reporting tool that TEA uses to calculate or to collect data regarding a district's student demographics and academic performance, their personnel, financial and organizational information. If the difference in numbers are reported in any fund type is 3% or more, the district fails this measure. We had a variance of only $44 from the total expenditures of almost $43 million. This variance is well under the $1.29 million allowed for this indicator. A clean audit of the annual financial report would state that the district has no material weaknesses in internal controls. Any internal weaknesses create a risk to the district not being able to account for its use of public funds, and we passed this indicator. Indicator 18 measures whether the district is complying with laws, rules, and regulations related to the expenditure of grant funds, contracts, and other state and federal funds. We also passed this indicator. Indicator 19 indicates whether the district is complying with legal requirements related to financial transparency by posting all legally required information. Huffman posted all required information on its website, including but not limited to the proposed budget, the adopted budget, the budget for two prior years, and its annual financial reports. Indicator 20 measures whether the board had the opportunity to consider the impact of changes in local, state, and federal funding prior to adopting the budget. Previously, this indicator only asked if property taxes were discussed. The board reviewed these items for fiscal year 2024 on April 24, May 22, and June 26, 2023. And lastly, indicator 21 looks to see if the district had an adjusted repayment schedule for an overallocation of FSP funds. We passed this last indicator as well. Lastly, the commissioner's rules describe requirements for six disclosures, which must be presented as appendices in the school's first financial management report. Everyone should have a copy of the financial report, and then we also have it in the back for any of those that want to pick it up. And those disclosures begin on page 15, and these are the ones that are being looked at there. And that's it. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I'm not sure if I have a question. I did make notes.
You did. I better not put it up yet.
Anybody have any questions? No, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm good to go right into the next. Everybody good? So we will go right into our public meeting to discuss proposed tax rate.
Yes, sir.
If you're ready.
I'm going to get one quick sip, please. All right, so we are here tonight to have the tax rate public hearing. A lot of the information that you're going to see tonight has been we've reviewed it before, but for anybody new to school districts, we're going to go over it tonight. If you have any questions at any time, please stop me and try not to fall asleep. So a high-level overview of school finance. A district's local property tax consists of a maintenance and operations tax rate, and if applicable, an interest and sinking rate. The INS tax rate provides funds for payments on the debt that finances a district's facilities, construction, and renovation. The MNO tax rate provides funds for day-to-day operations, which includes salaries, supplies, and utilities. In addition, state aid is received to help fund those daily operations. This funding is tied to tax effort, and tax rates provide an essential component in the state's school finance formulas. The notice of public hearing, the notice of public meeting to discuss the budget and proposed tax rate must be published at least 10 days, but not more than 30 days prior to the date of the hearing. The tax rate may be adopted at the meeting or at a separate meeting at a later date. As long as the amount adopted does not exceed the published rate, neither a revised notice nor a separate public hearing is required. The last notice published with the maximum rate for the board to adopt was on October 17 for the hearing made tonight. The reason it needed to be reposted is the change in the tax rate due to a proposed change increasing the homestead exemption, which will go to the voters in November. While we worked really hard at the beginning of June to ensure that we got it correct this year, the guidance on the tax rate calculation was released after the public hearing notice was already published. As a recap, the last 10 years of tax rate history is shown here and broken down between the MNO and INS tax rates. As a result of the 2023 voter-approved bond, the INS rate increased a little less than 12 cents, which was what was communicated to our community. Our MNO tax rate increased by one disaster penny as a result of reoccurring storms that continued increasing our insurance rates. This disaster penny only lasts for one year and is returned to the taxpayers before the upcoming budget cycle. So let's begin with the INS rate. In Texas, school districts adopt the INS rate to generate revenue to make the annual debt service payments associated with voter-approved bonds for facilities, construction, and other voter-approved purposes. While it may fluctuate annually, this amount may not exceed 50 cents per $100 assessed, and it can only be set to support the debt repayment. The INS rate is calculated and proposed based on the requirements needed to pay debt service requirements. I've listed here all of the debt service requirements for last year and also for this year, which includes any fees that are needed to repay the debt. Our financial advisors assisted us with structuring the 2024 and 2025 bond issues so that there would be minimum impact to the tax rate after both bonds were sold. First, we look at the debt payments due for the upcoming year. Now that our 2025 bond issue is structured, our anticipated payments with any fees are anticipated at $8.2 million for '25-'26. Last year, this was set at $8.9 million. After taking into account the additional state aid for homestead exemption, interest earnings, and delinquent collections, I anticipate the district will need to collect $6.8 million in INS property taxes this year. If 100% of taxable property values are collected timely, the district would need a .34.97 INS tax rate, which is a decrease from last year of 4.7 cents. However, we only collect about 95%, so a tax rate of 36.68 would be more appropriate, which would prevent us from dipping further into the debt service fund balance. The amount noticed and calculated for the INS tax rate for 2025 is .3668, which is a decrease again of 3 cents from the prior year. I'm showing here what was noticed in the paper, which is 1.0737. Before we move on to the MNO rate that was published, before we move on, the MNO rate that was published was .7069. Does anyone have any questions regarding the INS rate up to this point? So let's move on to the maintenance and operations rate. The maintenance and operations tax rate funds day-to-day operations, including our staff salaries. According to the Education Code, the school finance system is a shared responsibility between the state and the school district. The district generates its local share through property taxes. However, a district may not adopt more than its Tier 1 tax rate plus the 17 cents allowed in Tier 2. The state determines how much the district is entitled to based on the number of pennies it adopts and its ability to collect these taxes. So beginning with Tier 1, Tier 1 is the number of pennies levied by the district that does not exceed the maximum compressed tax rate. This compression was enacted with the 86th Texas Legislature in 2019. The MCR is dependent upon local property value growth and its estimated statewide property growth. At our June 5 workshop, I anticipated that our MCR would be .5909. However, the guidance that came out later was that we were to include the $140,000 homestead exemption, even though it had not been passed yet. We were to include that in our tax rate calculation, which leads us to another tax rate hearing tonight. We did not decrease to .5909. In fact, we stayed at .6169. Not only did this affect our MCR on the MNO side, it also affected the debt service requirements on the INS side. This MCR is set by TEA no later than August 5 of each year based on local property values submitted by the district. The MCR is inversely related to property value growth. The more statewide or local property value growth there is, the lower the MCR will be under the statutory formulas. As the state compresses our property tax rates, school district funding shifts to the state, and the state makes up the difference we would have received prior to compression. That means that without an increase in enrollment or other demographics, our revenue remains flat, which hinders our ability to keep up with the market. Tier 2 of the MNO tax rate is known as the enrichment tax rate. The enrichment rate provides additional funding from the state based on tax effort. Tax effort is the district's ability to generate property tax revenue. The maximum amount a school district may levy is 17 cents, which is made up of eight Level 1 pennies and nine Level 2 pennies. The Level 1 pennies are called golden pennies because these pennies generate the highest level of additional funding from the state. The Level 2, or copper pennies, generate a lower level of matching funds from the state. The first five cents are board-adopted. The remaining 12 cents may only be accessed by voter adoption unless the governor has declared a disaster. So what does that guaranteed yield per penny mean? The previous slide mentioned golden and copper pennies. These are referenced as such because they guarantee a different amount of revenue that the district is able to generate. If the tax base does not generate the guaranteed yield per penny, the state provides the rest. Under current law, golden pennies have a higher guaranteed yield at $129.52 per weighted average daily attendance. This means that the district may generate approximately $172,812 in local tax revenue and $446,081 in state revenue for each golden penny adopted by the board. Copper pennies have a lower guaranteed yield at $49.72 per weighted average daily attendance. Although the local property tax revenue generated would be the same per copper penny, the state revenue generated would be closer to only $45,454 per penny. So moving on to how anything over 5 cents may be adopted. As mentioned, the board may adopt only five of the 17 Tier 2 pennies. Any additional pennies would require a voter-approval tax rate election, which is a special election held by a school district to raise the MNO tax rate beyond the state-manded limit. Once adopted by the voters, the district continues to adopt these pennies each year. Outside of a voter-approved tax rate election, the tax code allows school districts to access additional disaster pennies in the year following a disaster declaration to help cover costs incurred by hurricanes, tornadoes, and floods. These are only available for one year but allow the district to bring in more property tax revenue without holding a tax rate election. Last year, the board adopted one of 12 available disaster pennies. These pennies were adopted due to the disaster declaration from severe storms in January 2023 and the increased cost in insurance due to these storms. Due to Hurricane Barrel in 2024 in July 2024 and the increased expenditures that resulted, the Board of Trustees may consider disaster pennies for tax year 2025. Again, Huffman ISD currently has five of the 17 pennies available, leaving 12 remaining. A district would consider increasing these because they generate additional funding from the state. And again, each penny will bring in $172,812 in local tax revenue, and the state bears the largest burden when the district adopts additional golden pennies. On July 8, 2024, Huffman was affected by Hurricane Barrel, a Category 1 hurricane. Over 2.7 million people in Houston lost power. Many areas, including those within the boundaries of Huffman ISD, went without power for a little over a week. This caused mold growth in a few locations in our district, including the high school, which required remediation. The total Hurricane Barrel cost to date is $505,000 plus an additional $22,000 for our FEMA consultants. Labor and equipment listed here is the amount that we can charge FEMA for the increased payroll of our maintenance staff as they prepared the buildings by removing debris, replacing ceiling tiles, and servicing generators. The equipment cost includes the roll-off dumpsters and generator usage. Of this, we have claimed a total of $387,000 of expenses to date and thus far been reimbursed $290,000. The tax assessor-collector has calculated the average market value of residents at $340,657. After all applicable exemptions, she also calculated the average taxable value of residents as $241,170. However, as we look at this, one thing to remember is, for purposes of tonight, this uses a $100,000 homestead exemption. For comparison, I have prepared for the board the minimum tax rate that the board may adopt, along with the additional revenue each additional penny would generate for the district, up to the MNO rate published in the paper. In looking at the number of the amount of revenue that could be generated, the four cents, which was listed in the paper, would provide the district with $4.1 million in additional revenue. If you look only at the golden pennies, we are looking at $3.9 million of additional funds, additional revenue. And this moves up to 12 pennies at $5.9. And this moves up to 12 pennies at $5.9 million additional for the district. However, we did not post at that. We posted at the 4 pennies. Do y'all have any questions so far? Nope. Okay. Keep going. Okay. It's important to review the effect any additional pennies would have on our taxpayer. In this example, I've used the average market value and taxable values as provided by our tax assessor-collector. Using these amounts from 2024 and 2025 as provided by the appraisal district, the increase from the prior year is $142. Even though the tax rates are the same, there was a slight increase in the average taxable value. Again, though, one thing to consider is if the additional $40,000 homestead exemption is approved, we're looking at approximately $400 more in savings for the taxpayer. I also wanted to provide here for you what the tax rates are for the surrounding districts. The reason that we look at that, even though some of these districts are much larger, are these are the districts that we compete with for anyone who's wanting to move into our district, for anybody who wants to work in a neighboring district. And that's why we look at those versus our peer districts that are about the same size as us. I've listed Huffman here at the 1.0737. And if I haven't said it already tonight, the reason we use the 1.0737 is because that is the rate of the district this current year. Dayton ISD has the lowest tax rate at .9572. Cleveland is also lower than we are at 1.024. And then everyone else, including Umbel, Crosby, Splendora, New Caney, and Sheldon, all have a higher tax rate than the $1.0737. So coming back to one of the first slides I presented you tonight, this looks at our tax rate over the last 10 years. It was $1.40 from 2016 to 2019. It was actually $1.40 much longer before that, but the compression started to bring it down. 2020, we were at 1.342. It lowered slightly in 2021, down to 1.1493 in 2022. 2023, we were able to lower the tax rate significantly to .94619. And then with the bond, it increased back up to 1.07, but not higher than it had been in prior years. This year, what was posted in the paper again was a continuation of the 1.0737. So in addition to this presentation tonight, and I'm going to ask if y'all have any questions or comments or anything, but this will be posted on our website so that if anybody wants to review it, it should be out there by the end of this week. So with that, I am going to ask, does anyone have any questions, comments? Is there anything additional that I can provide for you?
Questions?
I'm sure we will once we start having discussion.
Yeah, I don't think with this presentation I have any questions. So anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to take a couple minutes, and then we're going to get started with our recognitions here in about two minutes.